Oh, I'm trying to find it now.
I see. Well, that's a worthy endeavor, man.
Yeah, we have. We planned it that way.
Everything except for the supply.
It was Taco Tuesday, as you all recall, right? Two, 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 two. Tonight, it's pie. Pie day.
It is.
So, I don't know what's going on. Dr. Summers, are you doing this intentionally? That we just have these...
Absolutely.
...special meetings? So, welcome to the board meeting. To view this meeting's presentation documents, please access Board Docs. The link to the Board Docs website can be found via the D38 website, www.louispalmer.org, on the Board of Education meeting's webpage. To view the live stream video of this meeting, please go to the Louis Palmer School District 38 YouTube page. Ms. Wood, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Clausen will apparently be here in a few minutes. Ms. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Schwartz?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Ms. Upchurch?
Here.
Thank you. Ms. Phillips, would you be willing to lead the audience in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like, welcome, Mr. Clausen.
Welcome, Mr. Taylor.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add Item C3, School Counselor Corpse Grant Program, for discussion prior to the approval of the consent agenda.
Second motion.
Comments or questions?
Which item number?
C3. We've added it.
Oh, I see it.
Anything else? Ms. Wood?
Mr. Clausen?
Aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Ms. Upchurch?
Aye.
What an exciting time for recognition of students. And after, you know, the last couple of years, it's so refreshing. It is just beyond happy for me to be able to have a large group of people in a room where we recognize the achievements and the accomplishments of students. And to have the students here to be recognized appropriately so. So, let's jump into that section. We'll start with B1. It's Student Recognition for Bear Creek Elementary School. And my goodness gracious, it's the Pike's Peak Regional Science Engineering Fair. I was gonna use the acronym, but I didn't know what it meant. Please.
All right. Good evening, school board, Dr. Summers, Ms. Wetstein, and everybody at the district office and parents. Thank you so much. Tonight, we are back. Last year, we had nine students from sixth grade at Bear Creek. In fact, I think it was the very first time that you had opened up to having students recognized. And we couldn't let this year go past. We had nine last year, and we have 12 this year. Two students couldn't make it. But just like last year, I'm just so thoroughly proud. They all entered the Pike's Peak Regional Science Engineering Fair. Hopefully, they don't add another letter next year. And they worked really hard. This is something, even though we have our science fair at Bear Creek, they have the choice to either join that one or to put in extra hard work and work for a couple of months to join this science fair in the region. And they represented Louis Palmer District 38 with very high honors. I'm very proud of them. Over, out of all 12 students, they walked away with 20-some awards altogether. And we have Ms. Ryland, who is heading to state in April. And we're, she, we, not we, she is prepping for that with her parents. And we're just excited that they can be a part of this without guidance and help through the parents and Mrs. Parsley and everybody at the school. They spend a lot of afternoons after school since December, every Tuesday and every Wednesday. They volunteered to stay after school on those days that they could to get extra help and get extra things done. And then, they changed it. Instead of in-person at UCCS, they again had it online and virtual. So, you are looking at students that went through eight rounds of judging. Over, and some of us were at Grace Best so that we could kind of pump each other up. And then, four rounds in the afternoon. So, I am going to introduce, or they're going to introduce, say their name, and just say the title of your project that you did. And then, we'll have just, we'll have two students go into a little bit more depth about it.
Hi, I'm Ryland Serra, and my project was called "What Does Hair Crave?" And I was testing if we can use our shampoo on dogs.
My name is Anna Kiano.
I'm Alyssa Voat.
And... And we did hot ice.
I'm Izzy Castro, and I tested what type of dye works like the best and is the most vibrant with shirts.
I'm Abigail Megget, and my project was testing out different non-commercial materials, well, materials that could work as non-commercial filters to see which one removed the most bacteria from water.
Hi, I'm Clarice Luntiman. My partner Cindy Morrow couldn't make it. But we tested out whether oyster mushrooms could clear polluted soil.
My name is Nixon Bilbury, and my project doesn't really have any title name, so, yeah.
Keep it, drop the pace.
My name is Grant, and I made snow energy.
My name is Charlie DeLello, and I, I made houses.
My name is Caitlin Kearns, and I improved accessibility via hovercraft technology.
Some of them, as you can tell, they're just a little bit nervous. But we had a whole variety of science experiments. And let's, we're going to have Charlie, if you want to stand up and just quickly...
Um, so, wait, which way? Okay. So, I did, so I made three different types of houses, each made out of popsicle sticks or craft sticks. And I tested, I had a leaf blower and a shake table to... The leaf blower was to simulate like the wind of a hurricane, and the shake table was like to simulate an earthquake. And I tested which type of house out of three types of houses I made would stand better against each different, each thing that I put them up against.
So, I knew that special dog shampoo is either made to help their sensitive skin or their hair. And so, I tested if human hair or in dog hair would react the same to specific liquids. And if they, and they did. And so, that proved that their special shampoo is made to protect their skin. And what's interesting was chlorine bleach disintegrated both of theirs.
And you two, how many times did you have to do the test?
Eleven.
Eleven times. So, they were, they get an award for constantly trying to retest for dry ice. And we joked about it, but everybody hated the room smell because they were burning or boiling vinegar and baking soda. So, nobody got around our room for two weeks. But I just want to say thank you so much for letting us come and present these kids. They just, I'm so proud of them. They'll always, they're heading to seventh grade, so I don't get to see them next year in the hallways. But as you can tell, their personalities are very special. I've known most of them since they were in third grade and just very proud. And we had a lot of fun this year. So, it was a lot of giggles, a lot of laughs, a lot of science investigation. And hopefully, somewhere down the line, they will be the next inventors or whatever you are. I'm very proud of you. Thank you very much. Especially the parents, too, for dealing with all of us for weeks on end. Thank you.
The next recognition is for the Health Occupation Students of America. And this is Louis Palmer High School. Please. Mrs. Tupper.
Yes, that is me. Hello, board. Thank you so much for the invitation. We really appreciate you having us here. And thank you, all parents, for coming to support our group. So, just a little bit about what HOSA is. If you don't know, HOSA is for students who want to be in the Health Career Occupations. And so, that's what it stands for. And so, every year, our students work very hard on deciding what particular events they want to compete in at the state level. And so, they go to the State Leadership Conference and compete against everybody all around the state, against students who are in programs that are specifically designed for those events. And so, I always get really proud of our students when they do compete and beat programs that do this every day in their classrooms. And these students are doing this after school on their own time. And we're going out and getting resources for them so that they can compete and do well. So, like I said, students can choose from over 50 different events that are healthcare-related and affiliated. And so, we took 12 students this year up to state in Denver, and every single one of them placed top 10 in their events. And so, that was really incredible to see them go up and get their pins and get recognized for that. I have two representatives here for you guys. This is Jane Ernst and Amelia Solan. And they placed second in their event for CERT, which, if you don't know, CERT is Community Emergency Response Team. So, their event can be kind of wild. I don't know. Do you want me to put you on the spot and tell us about it, Amelia? Okay, all right. Yeah, she's game. So, tell them a little bit about what it was like to go into that room.
Going into that competition room was overwhelming, to say the least. Jane and I had been preparing for this particular competition for months beforehand. We would stay after school every week for typically about an hour to an hour and a half. And between the two of us, we were prepared for four emergency events that we would have to treat. These included splinting, uncontrollable bleeding, head-to-toe assessment, and a blocked airway. We didn't know which event we would be tested on, so we needed to be completely prepared for anything we were put up against. And I remember sitting in the room while we were waiting for us to be called back because it was one at a time, so the pressure was intense. So, we were just waiting. And I was so nervous, but I was like really trying not to be. But over, when we got in there, like, the lights were dim, but there was also a strobe flashing. There were sound effects towards the, I think it was a tsunami or flash flood. Yeah. So, there were like big ocean noises that were originally disorienting, but we got it figured out, and I am really, really happy that we did well.
Congratulations.
I just put her on the spot. She did awesome, guys. Thank you. I did want to mention a couple of other students who weren't able to make it. We actually had a total of six students who placed in the top three at state, which means that qualifies them for the international competition, which will be held in Tennessee and Nashville in June. And so, we had students place top three in the following other events, which are first aid and CPR, as well as job-seeking skills and health education. Thank you very much, board.
I noticed your medal on your rounder neck.
Our next item is Student Recognition for Palmer Ridge High School and Louis Palmer High School DECA. And Courtney Bushnell is going to lead that with Brian Trop. I hope I got that right. Trop, Chop?
Good evening, school board, Dr. Summers, administration, family and community members. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here tonight to recognize the amazing students that are here before you, as well as the others that couldn't attend tonight. So, for those of you that aren't familiar with DECA, DECA is a career and technical student organization that's connected to our Business and Marketing Career and Tech Ed program. And students who choose to join DECA have the opportunity to take what they're learning in the classroom and apply it in competition. And so, the goal of that is, DECA's mission is to prepare students to be college and career-ready. And the way that we help develop that is they take what they're learning again, and they apply it in a competitive setting where they develop skills like creative and critical thinking and communication skills, really skills that'll help students in their next phase of life, regardless of what path they choose to follow. And so, the path that has led these students here started with the district competition, which was at the end of first semester. And so, each of the students that made it to state won their section at districts. That allowed them to advance to the state competition, which was in February at the Broadmoor, an amazing place to go and compete. So, they spent three days and two nights at the Broadmoor, competing against over 2,750 students from across the state of Colorado. Between the two high schools, we had 81 students competing at the state level. We had 27 make finals. Finals means you're in the top 10 to 12 in your event category, depending on the event. And then, from that, we had 15 national qualifiers. National qualifier means you're in the top five or six in the state in your event. And so, that's really exciting, these students are advancing to compete at the International Career Development Conference, which is what our Nationals is called, in April in Atlanta. Let's see.
It's coming up.
Oh, woo! Let's go. Yeah, there you go. You should be excited. And so, I do want to recognize a few individual students who competed and did extremely well, not just this year, but also last year. Last year, all of our competition was virtual. That didn't stop these students from moving forward and doing an amazing job, which they continued this year as well. So, those of you that I'm recognizing individually, if you would just maybe take a little step forward and wave at the crowd so everyone knows who you are. First of all, Grace Carlander and Mackenzie Culver both placed top 10 at Nationals last year, and will be competing again at Nationals this year. So, that's top 10 at Nationals, really means top 10 in the world at the International Career Development Conference, which is amazing. Grace competes in Human Resources Management. Mackenzie competes in Apparel and Accessories Marketing. Did I get that wrong?
No, no, that's right. I'm being weird.
Okay, okay. I'm like, gosh, I hope I didn't get that wrong. They both also just completed terms as Colorado DECA state officers. Grace was the District 12 representative. Mackenzie was the state social media director. And they're also both still serving on the Palmer Ridge DECA board for the past two years. So, huge roles in our DECA chapter. So, congrats, ladies. And then, I also want to recognize James Baumert. Can take a step forward and wave. He is a two-time state champion in Sports and Entertainment Marketing. He's earned first place for the past two years. Last year, virtual competition, and this year, in person. So, that's amazing. And he also has served on our PR DECA board for the past two years, and he'll be heading to Nationals to compete at that level for the second time again this year. So, congrats, James. And Danielle and Nicole Day are our 2022 state champion and two-time national qualifiers in marketing management, team decision-making. Come on, step forward, ladies. Take a bow. They are also double qualifiers for Nationals this year as they also qualified for Nationals in their independent business plan. They also have been serving for the past two years on our PR DECA board. We also have a few other two-time national qualifiers. So, they competed last year at Nationals and then again qualified this year. Maddie Kump in Apparel and Accessories Marketing, don't believe she's here. Claire Deeds in Human Resources Management, Travel and Tourism. Claire has also served on our PR DECA board for the past year. And then, Gillian Gallagher in Financial Services, Team Decision Making. And then, this year, in Hospitality Services, Team Decision Making. Congrats. And then, I also want to recognize John Clausen. Take a step forward, John. John was elected to join the Colorado DECA state officer team this year as our District 12 representative. This will be the third year in a row that Palmer Ridge High School has had students serving on the state leadership board for DECA. So, that's awesome. He's also been on our PR DECA board for the past year. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, if I can get this one here. Just put some students on the spot because people probably don't want to listen to me talk. So, I'm just gonna open it up to the crowd. If anybody just wants to talk about their DECA experience briefly and maybe what DECA has done for you, and thank you, thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Mackenzie. So, when I first started DECA, even though it's a business organization, I had literally no intention of going into business. Now, next year, looking at, or this year, oh, wow. Looking at committing to a college, I'm looking at following my passion of business and starting my own business past college. I'm really excited. I think DECA has taught me a lot about how to be a professional, as well as how to take creativity in my own hands in professional settings. Because I always was under the impression that business is boring. It's all suits and board meetings. But really, there's so much you can do and so many people you can impact through business. So, it's been really transformative for me, and I'm really appreciative of Ms. Bushnell for teaching me all I know. So, I wouldn't be the same person I am without her, so.
Hi. So, I'm Nicole Day. My partner is Danielle Day, my identical twin, if you guys can't tell. So, that's just a really cool thing that DECA brings us closer together with. Other than that, I have gained so many skills through DECA. Like, in freshman year, I was terrible at public speaking. I had no confidence myself, and I tanked pretty much every presentation I did in freshman year. But now, I feel comfortable like talking in front of people, and I think DECA really helped me grow. And also, Ms. Bushnell taught me so many things about business and just real-world things that I wouldn't have otherwise learned in the classroom. So, I'm really appreciative towards her.
Hi, I'm Grace. So, I've done DECA for the past three years. And I think the biggest thing DECA has taught me is just how to talk in front of people and be around other people. It's also provided me so many different opportunities. This past summer, I was able to intern at our Tri-Lakes Chamber of Commerce, which was really fun, and I'm looking forward to pursuing a career in business.
Hi, my name is James, and I also joined DECA along with these people sophomore year. And going off of what a lot of these people were saying, I was terrible at presenting and using my creativity in effective ways as, you know, a freshman and maybe even sophomore year. But DECA really, really helped me kind of develop my ability to convey my ideas and get my point across. And also, DECA is providing me with a bunch of opportunities as well. I'm personally wanting to go into engineering, but, you know, as we're moving forward, everything is about collaboration and working with people, even in a field like STEM. So, I'm really happy to have that under my belt and continue to develop my skills.
Anyone else want to grab the microphone? So, in hiding back here is Byron Trop. He's the Louis Palmer advisor as well. So, yep. So, I just, huge congratulations to all of you for your hard work. And I'm excited to see what you can do at Nationals. So, let's go.
So, if we could do one more thing before these kids depart, is all the adults in the room, could we just stand up and give all of these kids a standing ovation? Great job, guys.
Great job, guys. Great job.
We would have the two tallest board members over there.
All right, the next agenda item is B4, public comments. Per board policy, Bedh, public participation at school board meetings. All regular and special meetings of the board shall be open to the public. Because the board desires to hear the viewpoints of all citizens throughout the district and also needs to conduct its business in an orderly and efficient manner, it shall schedule time during board meetings for brief comments from residents and property owners of the school district, parents, and employees. There is one time for public comment, and it is limited to 30 minutes. In an effort to allow all who wish to speak, the amount of time dedicated to each speaker will be dependent on the number of people who sign up, with the entire public comment period not exceeding 30 minutes. If 10 or fewer people sign up, each person will have three minutes to address the board. The signup sheet for public comments is available until 5:00 PM in the Learning Center meeting. The board respects the rights of the public to speak on matters concerning the operation of the schools. We believe that public comments that are critical of district staff, however, often cause unnecessary harm to those employees and to the education of our students. As a result, we prefer that members of the public share any criticism of employees in writing with the superintendent, who is responsible for supervising all staff and then involving the board as necessary. If you choose instead to address a personnel issue publicly, please understand that the board does not endorse the comments of any speaker, and reminds all who speak that they assume the risk of legal action by district employees in the event. The affected employees believe that any comments about them violate legal standards. In addition, speakers may be asked to appoint a spokesperson if the topic is a group concern. Lastly, keep in mind, we may have K through 12 students in the audience, in person or online. Please keep all comments appropriate to our audience. And we just have four people on our list tonight, so everyone will have a full three minutes. Our first person is Amy Davis, a D38 parent.
Hi.
Welcome.
I'm here tonight to speak about Monument Academy's Privacy and Protection Proclamation. There has been a lot of talk within the community about Monument Academy not supporting LGBTQ students. Never in any of their statements did anyone indicate, "We do not support these children." We support all children, and we want to keep them all safe. The real issue is in the law in the state of Colorado. It is not equal or fair for all kids. It does not protect all of our children. If a girl is using the bathroom and a boy walks into the girls' bathroom or locker room because he identifies as a girl, this is a complete violation of her safety and privacy. So we protect a small group of children at the expense of most of our kids. What does this say to our daughters as it makes them feel unsafe and unheard? How is that a healthy thing to teach them, that it doesn't matter if they feel safe or not, so as long as the other child, boy in this case, has free access to any facility? We talk about concerns for our youth, mental health, and suicide rate in our area, and yet, we as adults are creating a whirlwind of confusion by encouraging, enforcing, and accommodating a child's confusion rather than addressing the root causes to their gender, dysphoria, depression, et cetera. There are many consequences and forever health issues of these children should they choose to continue down the path of transitioning. Why is none of this ever spoken about? For those unaware, D-Trans Awareness Day was Saturday, March 12. I encourage you all to look this up and read their stories. It's pretty amazing. I fully support Monument Academy's proclamation. Their goal is a school environment that is protective of all. And for the record, the proclamation never once uses the terms transgender, encourages open discrimination, gives official directives, or violates the law. They simply drew a line in the sand and made a common sense statement. I ask the D38 board tonight to seriously think about all their revisions to their policies and make sure this protects all children and students within our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy Mackenzie, a D38 parent.
I watched last month's board meeting as well and heard a handful of citizens speaking against some of MA's recent decisions. One even called for you to revoke MA's charter. I brought copies just in case you haven't had a chance to read them yet. First was their resolution regarding the opposition to the use of critical race theory and other race-based training curricula and methodology in public education, which basically is broken down to that MA schools and teachers are expected to provide a true and accurate representation, education on America's history that does not deny or alter our past. All men and women are created equal. They are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, and among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. MA will not utilize or promote critical race theory or any other Marxist curricula for student education or staff training. Second was their proclamation regarding the privacy and protection of students as it relates to Colorado Senate Bill 8-200 and Colorado House Bill 21-1108. Basically, what it says is the board supports natural law, moral truth, in protecting the innocence, vulnerability, well-being, privacy, and safety of every one of our students. The board believes the use of a sex-specific common bathroom and the use of a sex-specific common locker room by the individual who is of the biological sex is protected by the right to privacy from an individual who expresses or identifies as a non-biological gender. And most importantly, this part, parents, not schools, have the predominant and fundamental responsibility for ensuring the education, health, self-safety, and well-being of their Students should be the number one priority. Since there should be no place for hate, we should encourage the diversity of all area schools, from the public to the Catholic school to homeschool to the charter school. Each student is different, and parents should decide the best fit for their kids. Please provide school choice in D38, and thank you to MA's board for protecting our students. Hold the line, and God bless.
Thank you. Jackie Burhans?
Hi, I'm Jackie Burhans. I'm a community member. There's two things I wanted to cover tonight. First of all, a couple weeks ago, I participated in a caucus at Lewis Palmer Middle School, and I wanted to thank the district for making their facilities available for community events. The school was very accommodating, giving us access, setting up tables and lights, as they always do. But this year was particularly challenging, as we decided it should be a hybrid event so that we could expand accessibility to those who couldn't make it in person for whatever reason. So while we were dealing with the audio and the lighting and the projection in the room, we were also live streaming and interacting with people on the internet, which gave us, I think, a better appreciation for the challenges you have here at the board meeting. I wanted to call out Assistant Principal Bill Kissel, Building Manager Matt Stevenson, Custodian Tim Graham, and anyone else behind the scenes who helped to make this a successful event. But the other thing I really wanted to talk about was I attended the Monumentaries event at Lewis Palmer High School. I was so impressed with the locally-produced student documentaries we saw, the facilitated discussions with students, the resources that were available, and the ending panel that was held. Even saw a board member there, that was awesome. For anyone who claims to be concerned about student mental health, man, this was such a valuable event. I wish more people could have come. And it highlighted one of the ways that we can give students a way to voice their challenges and to express what they need from the adults in their lives. These films tackled some tough conversations around suicide, the pressure to succeed, the pressure to fit in, the pressure to meet expectations. But all of this was student-led, and any program that strengthens students' confidence to speak up and speak out is doing an incredible service to them and to anyone who will listen. These films and our discussions facilitate self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-makings for both kids and the adults who attend it. What I heard the kids say is they want to be loved for who they are, not for what they do. That sometimes they just need someone to listen and not try to fix them. That they want us to recognize progression, not just perfection, and that sometimes when you ask them how they feel and they say, "Fine," that just means feelings I'm not expressing. So let's have those tough conversations and dig in. A thousand thanks to all the sponsors and participants, including the district, the Social Emotional Wellness Coalition, Pike's Peak Suicide Prevention Partnership, Peak View Behavioral Health, National Alliance on Mental Illness of Colorado Springs, Cedar Springs Hospital, and the Youth Documentary Academy, the school counselors, of course, and all of the students who participated. If you missed it, you can get more information at sewcoalition.org. You can actually see these documentaries and more on Rocky Mountain PBS in a series called Our Time, which you can watch on demand. And you can go to youthdocumentary.org to learn more, and that's where interested students who want to participate and who are budding filmmakers can sign up by April 16. Finally, in June, on June 2, one of our high school students will be premiering their documentary in an event at Colorado College. So keep an eye out for that and make sure to attend that and listen to the in-person discussion, because that's where all the gold was, not just watching the documentaries, but talking it over. And this is an incredible program. Please keep it up, keep supporting it. Thanks.
Thank you. Melinda Zarke, a parent.
I need to add some context in response to what was said here last month. What you and the parents who spoke here last time need to know is that the born gay theory, which claims that sexual orientation is genetically determined, has been completely discredited by a vast body of research from all over the world, so much so that the American Psychological Association officially rejected it years ago. This is on their public resources page. There is no consensus among scientists about the exact reasons that an individual develops a hetero, bi, gay, or lesbian orientation. Although much research has examined possible influences, no findings permit scientists to conclude that sexual orientation is determined by any particular factor or factors. Many think that nature and nurture both play complex roles. Now, I'm going to tell you that the APA is actually engaging in verbal sleight of hand here, because the science shows that the genetic component is actually minuscule. Here's a 2019 article from Reuters entitled, "No Gay Gene But Study Finds Genetic Links to Sexual Behavior." It's a write-up about research from the Institute of Molecular Medicine in Finland. Researchers scanned the entire genome and found a handful of locations associated with same-sex sexual behavior. They told the reporter they have a very small effect and explained considerably less than 1% of the variance. Now, how many times have we watched allies of the LGBT community laugh at people who imply that environment plays a role in sexual orientation? And here we have research from gay-affirming Finland saying it's actually less than 1% genetic. That means that 99% of sexual orientation, according to this research, is environmental. Here's another study from 2019. Journal of Sex Research, scientists analyzed surveys from 12,000 students and found that substantial changes in attractions, partners, and sexual identity are common from late adolescence to the early twenties and from the early twenties to the late twenties. What is going on during those ages? I'll tell you what's going on. Kids are in public schools, and they go off to college. For the sake of the kids in your care, for the sake of their families and their parents, the unchecked political manipulation that is going on in this community needs to be stopped. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is B4, board member comments. And Teresa, would you like to begin, and we'll just work to our right?
Sure. I'll be somewhat brief, because I have other things to say later in the agenda, but I... Ms. Burhans, you gave an excellent summary of the youth documentary event, and so I won't summarize like I was going to, but what I did want to highlight was, the day was a four-hour event with youth-produced documentaries, and then, not breakout sessions, but a chance for students to facilitate discussions, and then a larger panel in the auditorium at the end of the day. And listening to those students is really powerful, because there's nothing in between the student voice and their experience. So it was highly impactful for everyone there. The other thing I wanted to highlight was how many partnerships we had, and I know we've had a number of conversations about those over the months, but I think that Lewis Palmer School District 38 is doing a fantastic job partnering with all sorts of entities for the good of our children. And I was really impressed, you know, often we're up here in northern El Paso County in Monument, and we're used to seeing our friends, Tri-Lakes Chamber of Commerce, Kiwanis, all the people that we see regularly, week to week. But at this event, there was Centura Health, Pike's Peak Suicide Prevention, and a new bakery I had never eaten from called The Picnic Basket, who donated free food. So just know that at next year's event, there is very, very good food, so you don't need to eat ahead of time. So I just wanted to give a shout-out to the many people. It was quite a group effort to do that, but really student-led, and I was so impressed with the student leadership from both of our high schools that were there. So I'm so appreciative of that, and you will hear more from me later with regard to a school counseling grant.
Thank you.
I didn't prepare anything tonight, except that I wanted to also elevate our students, and this is why we do what we do. I just want to say congratulations to parents, too, the pride that was on parents' faces and the unity that we have, regardless of who our students are and what our students enjoy, what activities they participate in. These are all our kids, and to just be able to celebrate and elevate our kids for who they are, I think that's something that anybody and everybody can get behind about who our kids are. The pledge tonight just moved me, and I think it's because the students felt that pledge of allegiance to America, and you could feel it in the room. So I want to say congratulations to those students and parents. And I also want to put a shout-out to, if anybody has never participated in or judged at a DECA competition, they always need judges and help. And you want to see some kids shine and see how they've grown? Judge at a DECA competition. I also want to say congratulations to our Lewis Palmer Rangers basketball team for Winning State. And I want to put a shout-out to our Bearbotics team, who placed in Nationals down in Flagstaff, Arizona. We spent some time with some parents, and we've spent some time with students reading and meeting. We had our first D38 Elevates meeting, and we have another one coming up. We have a couple of them, so for parents out there and community members, I want to... That's not it, that's dinner. We'll get the information out there, right, Mark, to make sure it's spread wide and far. So I encourage everybody to come and talk to each other and with our staff and us as board members. We're here to collaborate and get through our school district together. And I don't know if anybody read it yet, but I'm going to elevate that we had a... There was an article in the Washington Post about D38, and something that I want to elevate right now is that, something I took away from that is, during the pandemic, our students in D38 grew. Our third graders grew from 58.2% to 60.2%. Our fifth graders jumped up six percentage points, while a lot of Colorado was down. So kudos to our educators and our parents and our leaders, Dr. Summers and your team, and the collaboration that had to go... And I want to put a shout out to our Bearbotics team who placed in Nationals down in Flagstaff, Arizona. We spent some time with some parents, and we've spent some time with students reading and meeting. We had our first D-38 Elevates meeting, and we have another one coming up. We have a couple of them, so for parents out there and community members, I want to make-- that's not it, that's dinner. We'll get the information out there, right, Mark, to make sure it's spread wide and far. So I encourage everybody to come and talk to each other and with our staff and us as board members. We're here to collaborate and get through our school district together. And I don't know if anybody read it yet, but I'm going to elevate that we had a-- there was an article in the Washington Post about D-38. And something that I want to elevate right now is that something I took away from that is during the pandemic, our students in D-38 grew. Our third graders grew from 58.2% to 60.2%. Our fifth graders jumped up six percentage points while a lot of Colorado was down. So kudos to our educators and our parents and our leaders, Dr. Summers and your team, and the collaboration that had to go into that to do what's right for kids and for our staff. That was just, to me, that's inspiring, and I think that's what we need to remember and focus on. We can focus on all kinds of things that we agree on and don't, or that we disagree on, but at the end of the day, can we agree that our kids are doing great and our teachers are doing great things for our kids and our staff and our team are doing good for our community? One last thing, I was asked during our Elevate, how much time do we as a district spend lobbying at our state level for funding? And I just want to set the record straight and say, we spend a lot of energy lobbying. Our superintendent does, we as school board directors do, we collaborate with other school board directors throughout the entire state of Colorado. We are always in Denver asking for more funding for education. There will be an increase in per pupil funding hopefully next year. That doesn't change, it's not like D-38 gets more than anybody else. We get the exact same. So that doesn't elevate us above anybody else. It keeps us equal, number one. Number two, anything that's above and beyond, when we hear things like the state's swimming in money, we're a Tabor state. That money goes straight back to you and me and everybody in that room. Everybody here gets that money back. So it's not like education gets additional money. It goes back to you, the voters. You, the voters, have to decide that. So I just want to set that record straight because somebody asked me to, so I just thought it fair to share. So that's all I have.
Thank you.
Ms. Upchurch, thank you for reading my notes. Your first five minutes were exactly what I was going to say, so thanks for covering it and being far more succinct. Also, shout out to the boys' basketball team. Great job winning state championship. You know, if you sit back and take a look at the students and the young adults that were here just a few minutes ago, it's amazing how many winners and leaders and people that distinguish themselves from their peers we get out of two relatively small high schools with 1,200 or 1,300 kids each. There's a lot of daily magic going on here. There's a lot of hard work happening behind the scenes that frankly, we never see, and true professionals like the staff here will tell you, we're not supposed to see it. But every once in a while, it's good to look underneath the covers and see what's happening. In that regard, I also wanted to take a sec to probably a long overdue thank you to my peers. Everybody on this table in the last three to four weeks has spent personal time with me in very odd hours to make sure we continue to drive things forward. Example from what Ms. Upchurch said is Mr. Clausen found a way to get us a private audience with one of our senators for us to see if we could-- about $4.5 million that is being taken back by the state from our district, and other districts have an equal share of their budget taken back. Ms. Upchurch and I spend a lot of time on early mornings or late afternoons and evenings talking about legislative items of which she helps me attempt to understand. Ms. Phillips' schedule's been so crazy that she was on the Peloton while I was on the elliptical while we were talking about a grant. Yeah, a little workout and a lot of work. But the point is, Dr. Summers and I typically speak between 7:00 and 8:00 in the morning on his way to work, and Mr. Taylor took a call this afternoon on zero notice to help me make sure I had a crisp understanding of certain financial issues. It's a really good team. I've never had anybody say no. And more importantly, we drive to resolution, so thank you guys for what you're doing.
Thank you, Ron.
You know, the great thing about being last is essentially everything's already covered. I just concur with the comments of my fellow board members, and I too want to congratulate the Lewis Palmer Boys Basketball Team. I had the privilege of attending, I think, every one of their playoff games, and just a great atmosphere, a great community, and we're very fortunate to live in the community that we do. It was great to recognize just a small group of our young men and young women that excel in our schools, and we're just very fortunate to live here in Monument, Colorado, and have the amount of success that we do have on a regular basis.
Thank you, Matt. So I'm a little older than most, but back in, when I was in high school and a young adult, the discussion at the time was about equal opportunity for women. It's hard to believe today, isn't it? Because it feels pretty equal now, but I think there was a federal law, Title IX, that was passed to make sure that women had equal opportunity. It's amazing to me that today, in an Ivy League school, we have a transgender athlete that is breaking all sorts of female records. So I'm confused, to say the least. I thought that my day was confusing, but now today, we have a new gender, I'll call it, because how can that be female? I mean, if there's any attack on Title IX in sports particularly, that's it, and yet it exists. And I don't get it. And I don't have the science, the knowledge, the whatever to, you know, say what's right or what's wrong, but it just seems like it's totally in conflict with existing law, Title IX, where people who choose or yield to their inner voice, or whatever you want to call it, decide that they're going to compete against the opposite sex. And physically, there is a difference. Right, wrong, or indifference, that difference is real. And so now we have all sorts of records being broken in an Ivy League school because of this tolerance environment that we live in. What's really important, though, for our school system, and what I want to focus on, is our strategic plan. You know, our first priority is to have a safe, warm, and welcoming-- safe, warm, and welcoming environment for each and every child. Our second priority is to have curriculum that enables their achievement and growth as they mature and learn. And the third priority is to have teachers and teacher development that supports that process. I'm grateful in our school district that we have a charter school that provides choice. So as one example of that choice is their curriculum is based on a classical model. The public schools are based on a standards-based model, both good, but different, and it allows choice. Our family chose to put our children in the middle school for the sixth grade because we believe that sixth, seventh, and eighth middle school makes more sense for our kids than does a seventh and eighth grade experience. So we're grateful that we had the choice to choose. And I'm grateful that throughout the pandemic, I think first and foremost, what this school district did is provide parents choice, whether it was 100% online or 100% in class or anything in between for that first year and a half. That's what we tried to provide, parental choice. And I heard in public comments tonight how important it is that parents have a role. I 100% support that. I think that the-- being married to a teacher who has taught most of her life, she knows the value of partnering with parents for the benefit of those children. She learns things about those children that she can only learn from those parents. Unfortunately, not all parents are as involved as she would like to have seen. In fact, she was sorely disappointed too often. So, you know, how do you handle this as a school system? Well, choice is a good place to start, but recognizing that each and every child matters is the other end of the spectrum, and not everybody comes from whatever a typical normal home is, right? Everybody has different things that they have to deal with, and a system has to accommodate everyone. And I appreciated a comment I heard tonight about MA not really being discriminatory, but just wanting to, you know, basically challenge the law. And I appreciate what they're trying to do. Does that mean that we're going to change all our policies? No. What it means is our policies still are designed for each and every child, and they're all unique. I loved, two months ago, where we had some students come in after months of research working with Amber Wetstein and others and came up with the portrait of a graduate. It was excellent, excellent. And every child can fit within that portrait. That's the beauty of having a vision, a strategic plan, because it gives us unity of purpose regardless of all the partisan issues that exist. Those partisan issues aren't going to go away tomorrow or today. They're going to be here. And I appreciate everybody's positions and how they want to support whatever it is they believe in, but as a system, as a public education system, we have to look at every child. And every child needs to have, I think Dr. Summers calls it, you know, equal opportunity, if you will, right? There's terms that we hear like equality and equity and different terms, but the point being is every child, every day matters regardless of who they are, where they came from, who they represent. Every child matters. I'm grateful to serve on this Board of Education in this school district that really does have a vision that's inclusive for every child and that we recognize frequently, not frequently enough in my mind, but frequently, their successes. And I'm just going to echo what I heard Ms. Upchurch say. Did you feel the unity? And I did, and I'm grateful for it. So the one last thing I wanted to bring up before we turn this to Dr. Summers is engage and elevate, or elevate and engage? I'm not sure I have the right order, but one occurred, and I unfortunately was out of town, so I wasn't able to attend, and I apologize to Palmer Ridge Elementary for that, Palmer Lake Elementary. But the point being is it's begun, and I've read some feedback from attendees, and it wasn't perfect. Thank goodness. They had some great ideas about how to make it better because this is going to be an ongoing process where board members and staff members meet with the community in an engage and elevate approach to all of the issues that face the operations of this school district. So with that, one is I just want to conclude this Pi Day with my appreciation for being able to be here, number one, and number two is to be able to serve with this board, and number three is to learn so much about our community members, the students, the parents, the administration, the staff, et cetera. It's been enriching for me personally, and I express gratitude for that. Dr. Summers?
Thank you, Mr. Taylor, and for your comments. Thank you also, Public. And again, big congratulations and kudos to all the students that were here, and I appreciate that they're quickly moving to their homework or other duties that they have this evening. So I'm going to invite the team to join me as we did last month, just through the lens of this update. So, Mr. Frampton, that means you first, and everybody else, if you can be ready, following Rick's description. We have, as we are apt to do, a comprehensive update aligned with our strategic plan priorities as well as some noteworthy news, some of which was touched on, but we can go a little bit deeper as we're working through all of that. So without further ado, Mr. Frampton, if you have the clicker or the driver, there you go.
I do. Good evening. Priority One Updates. We're going to be talking here as in our next agenda item about the policy updates to AC, so I won't go into any detail there, but be prepared for that conversation to follow this. I am really happy to announce that we received yet another grant. This one is just a touch under $100,000, and it's designed to help support our nursing staff, our overworked nursing staff with much higher student counts than necessary. We were able to, in a grant that was written to the state, identify the fact that our nursing levels are significantly lower than what they need to be, and the state acknowledged that and has honored a grant of $100,000, just slightly under $100,000 for the next 18 months. Where this is going to be really helpful for us is it's going to allow us to sustain the existing nursing because we increased the nursing for the COVID. Kristin Lent specifically is our COVID coordinator. We were using ESAR dollars to support her additional time, and we now are able to utilize this additional monies to maintain that level of nursing support moving forward.
Is this also ESAR-funded, or is this, where is this money coming from?
This is a separate grant completely. That's specific for nursing, and it's going to enable us to maintain our nursing care for a longer duration of time.
It's a state-sourced grant.
Yep.
Okay. And so when we brought on the extra nursing during COVID, would you anticipate that 18 months from now, we would still need that additional position?
Part of the grant is to evaluate and continue to evaluate that need, and if in fact that we determine that that need exists when this grant is over, we will work on budgeting through other factors to continue that if necessary.
Great, thank you.
And possibly one of the more exciting topics in Priority One is we are going to recommend that we discontinue the COVID tracker, and we no longer have a need to track the positive cases in our school. I think right now, when we looked at this week, the number of cases was exactly zero. We're hoping that this trend continues through the rest of the spring, and we're considering making that change, so temporarily anyway, and then if in fact we ever have a need, we could obviously reinstate that immediately.
And Rick, for prosperity's sake, you can click to the next slide, which shows the zeros. And then I think even the next slide behind that just demonstrates what it looks like across the county. For anyone that is interested in that public health data, it has significantly decreased over the last few weeks, which is a welcome update to share, and also not denying the fact that it has been two years plus a day since we started our shutdown back on Friday, March 13, 2000. So we've come a long way, and, or excuse me, 2020, 2000.
It's felt like 20 years.
Yeah, something like that.
Quick question.
Yeah. Quick question. Sorry to slip. Thank you. Questions on any of that?
Yes. Did the county say, did the county have any theory or fact as to why this trend has moved so sharply, so quickly in a country with over 300 million people?
I haven't heard them speculate on the why. However, I do remember being in a meeting early January when we were at our highest peaks ever, and they were anticipating that this was going to occur because if you look at every peak that we've had over the last two years, you'll notice that the decrease comes at a similar rate as the increase, and sure enough, that has yet again occurred. So we were able to predict this was going to happen. One thing I'm hearing from the county is that we need to be prepared for this to be more seasonal in nature, and we suspect that there will continue to be peaks and valleys on the numbers and counts as we move forward.
Thank you.
Any guidance from the state in terms of, have they officially ended the pandemic situation, you know, by the government? I mean, are we still in that same state, or have they kind of said, no, it's really more now an endemic, or no guidance or direction?
Well, it's interesting, if you don't mind, Mr. Frampton. We have seen a significant decrease in the types of updates that we were receiving while we were in the middle of all of our ongoing efforts to address what the role was of schools and the approach within the pandemic. Governor Polis did have a press conference, I believe it was a couple of weeks ago, that more or less declared that the pandemic-- more or less declared that the pandemic phase is now shifting into more of an endemic phase. And I can provide a link to that if, if that's helpful. The other thing that I would just echo from the county, and it, it doesn't really address your question, Mr. Schwartz, but the most recent youth data brief that we've received still does require us to report the event of outbreaks, COVID positive cases and outbreaks to El Paso County. I mean, we've not had that for weeks now. Isolation continues to be required in El Paso County. Quarantine of household contacts continues to be required. However, as all of that is in place, as you can see from the incidence rate, it's just not as prevalent as it's been. So I think it's, it's fair to say that there's still a monitoring mechanism that's in place. But in terms of something that we can, you know, officially point to, I, I know there's resources that are all out there, it's just that the effort has really slowed down in terms of what the state is expecting of schools in that regard.
Is it fair to say, other than the reporting of incidences, there's no other controls in place?
Beyond what I just mentioned, those are the, those are the expectations that were iterated as of March 8th, 2022. I, I should note, there was one bullet I just skipped over, which is exposure notifications are no longer required for individual cases, though not mandatory. Exposure notifications continue to be recommended as a best practice.
Yeah, and we'll continue to notify folks if there's a close contact and, and exposure with some risks that we feel would be appropriate to communicate that to the close contacts. We've been doing that all year.
So henceforth, any type of assembly with larger groups of people is back to pre-COVID?
There are no restrictions regarding that.
Kids get a prom.
Oh, absolutely. And I think it was evidenced most recently at the state basketball tournament, if you were there. I know Mr. Clausen was. It felt very much like what it did in 2019. Great crowd, great energy, all that good stuff.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Rick.
Thank you.
Okay, for Priority Two, we wanted to provide you an update on a couple of items that took place during our March 4th PLC date. We specifically brought together both high school staffs to meet with the consultant that we've hired as part of the literacy grant. So we are contracting with a consultant as required by that grant, and we were able to launch the work of the literacy grant with all high school teachers on that day. We also did some intentional work with middle school math teachers, looking at their student achievement data and planning for the rest of the year according to what we learned, looking at how our students are growing. As far as curriculum adoption processes go, we are beginning the process of bringing together physics teachers to look at our physics curriculum. So we will be bringing you a proposal or an update before the end of the school year regarding if we need to do any purchasing of new materials for physics. And we also purchased some updated materials for preschool teachers with the literacy grant funds. Finally, and I believe Ms. Phillips may be speaking to this a little bit more, we are preparing to submit a counselor core grant, which will provide specific support around career and college counseling for our middle and high school students, as well as kind of reinvigorating our ICAP process, that is the Individualized Career and Academic Plan, as part of that grant, should we receive those funds. We are asking for about $700,000 over the next four years. What questions?
Should I ask about the grant now, or wait until we talk about it later?
It has a separate agenda item, so we might wait, and then we can get a little more granular then.
Just had a simple question. Yeah, sure, it's fine.
Thanks, guys.
Oh, wait, Dr., Mr. Frampton, would you please share the Alorium Day Award information?
Yes, I'd be happy to. Alorium Day is, applications are now open. They'll be open through the end of spring break. We'll be closing them, I think it's on the 29th of March, when we close those applications. We will be convening a team to evaluate those applications and determine some winners in the three categories, students, teachers, and community members. And then on April 20th, at Lewis Palmer High School, we will be holding a celebration.
I hope some fellow board members will be there with me.
What, what time is that?
I believe it's seven o'clock, but I need to confirm that.
Okay.
I'll get back to you.
Yeah, is there a Google invitation yet for that, or?
Let me make sure we send out
That'd be helpful.
That communication one more time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. So Priority Three update, one of the exciting things that we're about to do is have focus groups for compensation review. So we're gathering input on ideas that people have for recruitment, retention, and just creative ideas that staff may have. After this evening, administrator, excuse me, administrator contracts will be issued, and those names have been provided to, to you, as well as the individuals that are our special service providers. You can expect to see some recommendations regarding leave policies, looking at valuing our employees and seeing what options we may have for being a little creative in our
Good evening. So for Priority Four update, it's beginning to sound a little bit repetitive, but we'll be meeting for the second time with the Financial Advisory Committee tomorrow night, and they will be hearing much the same information you're hearing tonight on the budget preview that will, that I'll be presenting here shortly. I'll also introduce them to the Balancing Act tool. That work is underway. I've got the numbers loaded in for this year's current budget. Now we're sort of fine tuning that with additional comments and information bubbles next to each type of funding and also the expenditure lines, so that the, the user of the tool can fully understand what those line items represent in our budget and help them to understand better how, how we receive our resources and how we allocate those resources for spending. And as I mentioned, I will be reviewing just briefly with the board tonight, the budget planning that's going on currently to get us where we need to be for next year's budget in June. Any questions?
Quick one for Kristin. On the focus groups, what are your thoughts in terms of the makeup of those groups?
After giving some consideration, I think what we're going to do is focus on work groups. So get together the classified employees, licensed and admin separately, so that we don't have a mixed group where people are saying, that doesn't really apply to me. And hopefully we can have a rich conversation.
Just as a, a thought.
Sure.
Has there been any consideration given to having a focus group with members of the community?
That's definitely something that's on the radar.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I have one more question, too.
Sure.
Can you share for those that don't know the difference between certified staff and classified staff, what that differentiation is?
Sure. Certified are those that hold a license. That could be your teachers, your TOSSAs. It could be your special service providers, so your OT, PT, speech, school psychologists, nurses, et cetera. And then administrators would be the other group. Classified employees are going to be your typically hourly employees. So they're going to be, they're also considered educational support. So that group includes our custodial, our bus drivers, some of, some of those groups, nutrition services, and so forth.
Is there a way that we can get at a later date information on about how many hours in a school year or in a week that paras or bus drivers or custodial staff work, since they're on an hourly wage?
I'd be happy to share that.
Come on up, Mr. Belcher. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you, ladies. Howdy, thanks for having me tonight. Do a quick Priority Five update. The first and the most fun one here, in my opinion, is a community survey that we're about to do. We will be tentatively launching this at the end of March. We talked about this a little bit when we did our Priority Five deep dive. We wanted to do an awareness and perception survey, but we also have other questions that we want our community to weigh in on. So what we're going to do is we're going to work with a partner who's going to help us distribute a very tailored survey to our people via text messages. We'll distribute it via email. We'll also post it on our website. And what we hope to accomplish is to understand how people feel about our district as a whole, but we also hope to understand what they might support when it comes to a potential ballot initiative. So, any questions on a potential survey?
Can you define tailored?
Tailored questions? So, that's a good question. What we will be including in the questions is, how do you feel about the district? Do you feel like we're good stewards of public funds? Do you support our teachers? But we'll also get into, how do you feel about potential ballot initiatives?
Will it be shareable?
So we will be sharing it for sure.
Sure, I just thought of this after the last engaged session in terms of, you know, trying to get a survey out to as many stakeholders as possible.
Right.
And one thought I had was if you can actually share a link, if you receive it via text or email.
So the links that you'll receive via text are most likely going to be tailored to you specifically, but what we can do most likely is in our outreach, we can make sure that it's a link that if somebody forwards it, it will be fresh for that person who receives it.
Sure, great, thanks.
Is there a spot in this survey for the participant to play some comments, thoughts?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
All right.
My, one other question would be, when we put this out there, if I, if I were a person taking a survey and it said, what do you think about hamburgers? I would say, well, depends, with pickles or not. I like hamburgers, but if you put onions on them, then I'm going to say no. So I, the analogy is, I think there's a threshold there of, somebody might say, I feel okay about this up until this point. So I'm curious, do we have enough information to be able to have, to put that out there? Okay? Okay?
I believe we do.
Okay.
The goal is not to lock anyone into a black or white answer as much as there's room for gray.
Appreciate that, too.
Totally agree. When you look at the survey and the responses there, you'll see strongly agree, I mostly agree, neutral, I somewhat disagree, or I strongly disagree. So, statements will be put out there in the form of questions, and you'll be able to answer in, in a couple of different ways.
Okay.
All right. So a couple times today, we've heard about our engage and elevate sessions. It was a nice test drive. We heard some great feedback, and we've received some feedback since then. So, looking forward to our next meeting on March 30th, and we will be doing that out in Kilmer. So, hoping to see many people from our community out there. So, that's posted on our website. We will be emailing that to the community in the eastern area of our district, and we're really looking forward to getting out there again. And then finally, another thing that I teased in our deep dive into Priority Five was a community newsletter. So, we want to be telling our story. We want to be communicating directly with the individuals in our district. And you can't do that 100% through advertising with a, with a super small budget. One way we can, we can do that is to directly deliver some district news to our stakeholders, so that they can feel it, they can see what we're doing, and there will be a digital component to go along with it. So, really looking forward to that, and we're hoping for mailing, a drop mail at the end of March.
So one thought on that, if that's not too significant an expense, is could each of the board members maybe have a dozen?
Of course.
Clean copies of it, just to have to hand to people who say, I didn't get it?
I'll give you more than a dozen.
Thirteen's great, thanks.
Perfect. Any other questions on Priority Five?
Mark, do you mind queuing up the next slide as well?
Happy to just walk through. We do have some great March kudos. In the coming hours, this will be posted on our news.louispalmer.org site. Really been enjoying reading what our individuals have to say about one another. It's been, we've gotten some great feedback. So, I don't want to butcher these names, but I'm going to go ahead and push forward with it. William Gamache, Margarita Pataglia, Jana Strahan, Emily Torkinson, Debbie Sell, Shar Armstrong, and Chad Wheaton. So, congratulations to all those who received kudos. D38 appreciates our employees, and we really are encouraging anybody to submit a kudos. You can submit that at news.louispalmer.org.
Can I put in an extra kudo? Am I allowed to do that?
Of course.
Mr. Gamache just led some fantastic musicians last weekend for solos at Cheyenne Mountain High School, and he's been doing some great things with our, our middle school band program. And he's pretty new on scene, and he's doing a great job with those kids.
Thanks for that. It's a great plug. And I'm not quite sure what's wrong with this, we have tech difficulties on this slide or slides, looks like we're just out of
We've got a burning out light bulb.
We have, we have a, a light bulb that's ready, on Pi Day, no less. But I did want to just take a moment with some of
Could, I wanted to ask a question.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Yep.
I've noticed the, I think it's an email distribution that is like a newsletter or, you know, that's new this year, right?
Yep.
What's the distribution of that? What's the volume that you have?
Absolutely. So we do two sets of distributions. We do one to our broader community, and then we do one to our staff. And the reason for that is simply, we have a really, really good distribution list for staff in our Google Suite. And then outside of that, through our partner, Blackboard Parent Link, which is the Communication Department tool that runs our website, but also our push notifications, our text messages, et cetera. So between the 750 staff, we also have about 8,000 to 10,000 parents that it goes out to, in addition to our community group, which people can sign up to receive information from D38.
The reason I brought it up is I've had a number of people comment to me about how much they appreciate that.
Great.
And, and as is inclusive, it's, it's a overall very good summary, and so I'm just feat, I'm giving you feedback I'm hearing, and they appreciate it.
That's wonderful. Do you sense a desire for it to be more frequent or less fre, less frequent?
I didn't hear any of that.
Okay.
They want it to continue.
That's great. We are, we are absolutely going to continue it.
We'll have another edition out before the end of the week, I believe.
Yep.
So that's our target before spring break. Okay, so minus the distorted picture, but if you're looking
And the orange.
Online, you can see it really well. So as was already referenced, just another shout out to our Lewis Palmer Boys Basketball Team, and really the whole school and community. The way that they represented themselves with class and with distinction, not just on the court, but off the court as well, I think just speaks volumes. This is our fourth state title, if I'm not mistaken, within 10 years, fifth overall for that program.
Dr. Summers, if I may.
Oh, sure.
I wanted to, just beyond the greater community, I was at another event. I wasn't able to make the final game, but I found out about the championship game via my son, who was on the state championship team three years ago, and they had a text going. All of those former players were tuned in and watching that game. So
Nice.
Just to elevate for all of us, the community of our recent alumni.
Absolutely. And I believe we're targeting an April recognition that we can invite some of the team to, those that are able to join. So, that will be next month. In addition to, we had, I believe, also this past Friday, the Prairie Winds Science Fair. So that was combined with a bake sale, all grade basket raffle, and book fair, so quite the event at Prairie Winds. So a big shout out to the school and the community there. And then as you heard a little bit earlier this evening, we had a Bear Creek Elementary School Science Fair and a STEAM event, which had several first place winners, a total of 67 students that were recognized. So, that was filled with different projects and fun learning opportunities, as well as the DECA students that you heard earlier. So, that's just a recap of some of the numbers there, in both, both in terms of national qualifiers and different places that our students were able to achieve. And then we had a, actually, a little bit more than a handful of students who were recognized by Representative Doug Lamborn on March 5th, so the class of 2026 Service Academy nominees, including those names that you see listed. And again, I'm going to sidestep butchering those names, so you can reference those. One other event that I do want to call out, and I think you mentioned it, Miss Up Church, is our Bearbotics team. They had a very successful weekend, and they are gearing up next for the Colorado Regional at the University of Denver on March 24th through 26th. That will be an event that is also livestreamed. So, there's going to be additional pictures that are shared from our Bearbotics Facebook and Instagram pages. They placed second in the event overall in Arizona, so both in the overall achievement, competition, and robot technical capabilities. So, very well represented at that most recent event. And I believe that is all for the update. So, unless there's any other questions for us.
Any comments or questions for Dr. Summers or his team? Excellent update.
I appreciate that we're bringing the Balancing Act tool that we referenced earlier this year, that we worked on at the state. That's, I think that's a really helpful and good tool.
We look forward to diving into more of that as we launch into our FAC meeting, as was already referenced, for tomorrow evening, and happy to make that an ongoing feature for the interactive opportunities that exist with that tool.
Thank you.
So, thanks for that shout-out.
Thank you. So, while we're getting set up for the next agenda item, C1, can we take a three- or four-minute break?
Sure.
That was on the record, Dr. Summers. That was on the record.
What?
I didn't hear.
Your picture on the other hand. Thank you for that. Your picture on the other hand, I thought was very, caught you in good light. I looked way too...
You were pretty serious.
I was pretty serious?
Yeah, you should.
I am very relaxed. Like, that's all the time.
Appreciate it.
You know what? I'm getting...
Thanks for that shout-out.
Are you? No, that's totally appropriate. I'll call up on my phone. He'll be there.
Sure. I'm good from nine to 10. Ninety to...
That is a blue suit, sir. Look a sharp-dressed guy.
Is it too blue?
Nope. You look perfect. Looks like a suit of authority.
My wife accuses me of wearing the same type of suits and shirts all the time, so...
I can go eight.
Oh, my gosh. You have to be a proud papa. Is he in June this year?
So, last year, he won DECA. And then, because it's so busy, he didn't get to go to Dallas.
Yeah, I was like, oh, that's a awesome...
I'm impressed.
Oh, jeez.
Eight to nine, Teresa.
All right, we're booked. Are you sure you can go all the way to nine?
Yes, I can do that. So, he's been commuting up through the schools, trains up to their minds.
Okay. And do you want to do it in person, or do you want to? I can do it.
No, I'm coming down to P8.
Here.
He's also saying that he really appreciates...
Okay, sent.
Like, I could see that about him. So, Jordan's home for...
Sent.
And then, he's home...
Thank you.
Dennis.
I think he's staying up in Gold, doing his own thing.
Did you?
Yeah.
Are you going anywhere for spring?
Uh, we're just going to do some skiing, local skiing trips.
Okay. Kitty, thank you for letting us take a short break.
Is this one on?
Not yet.
Test, test, test. Mark, are we on?
We're all muted.
We're subject to Mark's command.
Tell us when the break's over.
Thank you.
Hi, Kitty.
Hi. Hello again. So, in your board packet, you have the typical monthly financial reports. Are there any questions in particular that you'd like me to address on any of those reports? I do have the pupil counts showing on the screen right now. We have, this is our March count numbers at 6695 students. So, any questions at all on any of those reports, or should I just go ahead with the budget presentation?
What's your presentation? Looks like she has a question.
I just had a, so Bear Creek is increased 34 students from October 2022, or is that the change from?
Yeah, that's from October count, yes, past year 21. Yeah. Great. So, the purpose of this presentation is just to give a brief overview of the planning and considerations to take into account as we start to develop the budget for next school year 22, 23. The first thing I'm showing here is a timeline. So, each time the board meets, these are the things that you might expect to see as we go through the planning process for next year. The first one is tonight. So, in this presentation, we'll go over the timeline, and also some proposed budget assumptions and parameters that are aligned to the strategic plan. And then, finally, I'll show a quick preview of initial revenue forecast. So, the first thing, these budget assumptions are just being developed. I'm happy to take input on any of these. Some of them are obvious, such as health insurance. We know we're going to have a fairly significant increase there. There is another para increase that will be applied beginning July 1st, and that is a 0.5% increase for both the employer and the employee, again, for next, starting next July. So, that will be part of the budget process as well. I'm proposing a per-pupil allocation for the operating budget. Those are estimated numbers right now, $170 at the elementary, $190 at the middle school, and $210 at the high school. This is just really, funds contributed to the schools for their operating needs. It does not include salaries and benefits. I'm also thinking that we need to apply a little bit extra in the budget to address inflationary pressures that we might feel on our utilities, on our supplies, all kinds of things that might be impacted by that. So, just to get you thinking about other budget considerations that we need to plan for.
On that particular topic, on the energy cost, are we, are we going to have a reporting mechanism in place for the Schneider contract, and so we can actually see, hopefully, you know, historical costs versus current costs, and what the savings might be, because that's what's being used to pay back that contract? And adjusted by inflation, obviously, right? Since you brought that up, right?
I believe that we are already, well, I know we are already sending to Schneider our utility bills so that they can capture the data that they need to provide that feedback to us.
So, the report that we'll see will come from them?
Yes, as I understand it. Is that your...
I think two pieces to that, yes. And let me just make a quick plug for an upcoming work session, April 5th, that will invite our Schneider representatives to share what the scope of that work and how things are progressing as we move into the summer. I do believe they are going to be able to produce the type of reporting that you're requesting. I think something that we will also be able to benefit from is a check-and-verify approach within our office. So, that's not something we've talked a ton about yet, but you're a couple of weeks ahead, and we're looking forward to diving into more of that detail going forward.
And just as a reminder for the community, the project itself won't be completed until toward the end of this coming summer.
That's correct. Yes, and...
Real benefits aren't so much this year as what will come into play.
That's correct. And as another reminder, they are guaranteed at a minimum amount over the first three years of that contract as well.
Great. Thank you.
Question for you?
Yes.
On the stabilization factor, for example, can you explain what the 50% buy-down means to the district in terms of real dollars?
I think this year, it was 3.9, so cut that in half.
It would be around two, but the caution is that that is an estimate that was based on February projections at the state level, and the latest that we're hearing is that will likely not be the full amount that is bought down. So, we're supposed to hear more on Thursday, and I think our conservative estimate is probably, I would probably place it at closer to a 25%, somewhere between a 25% to 50% buy-down. So, anywhere from two to, or one to 2 million.
Right. Which is a 2% to 4% gain for us over the previous fiscal year in net...
Correct.
Net incremental cash.
Correct.
Okay. That's question one. Question two is, what is a 7.5% health insurance increase in real dollars?
Do you have any idea, Kristin? I can run those numbers for you.
Just your rough gut feel. I mean, do we spend $4 million a year on healthcare?
No, we don't spend...
Can we run that and get back to you? Just so we're not...
I was thinking, we did do the budget, the benefit holiday in December and January, I believe, and I think that came to the tune of 200 to 300 a month. It's probably closer to two.
Okay. So, that's $2.4 million a year, roughly. This is not an exact science where I'm going here, but 10% would be $240,000. So, seven and a half would be three-quarters of that, right?
We follow your math. I'm following your math.
$180,000. So, it's $180,000, roughly, give or take 20%. My point is as follows. Since we have a little bit of runway here, I want, this is a wonderful opportunity for us to maybe take a look at an incremental $180,000 expense, and if there's a way for us to innovate and not incur that expense without any negative to our staff, then it's 2.33 extra instructors per year. It's worth a few hours of work to see what...
Can I restate what I'm hearing you say?
Yeah.
I'm hearing you say that you would like us to look at the potential impact per employee and determine whether or not it is of benefit to be able to essentially cover what that increase is, because there would be an increase to...
No.
Okay. So, please...
Rather than simply accept a cost increase, can we understand what it is, how much it is, step back and see if maybe we can innovate around it, and therefore not absorb a cost increase and still maintain the same or greater level of benefit for our employees?
I think...
And move that money into more counselors, more teachers, other things that we're in significant need of.
Can you give me an example of the innovation you're referring to?
There's lots of different healthcare plans out there, hundreds of them.
Kristin, I believe we are doing...
Yeah, so you're already doing that. That's my point.
She's inviting, we have an insurance committee that will...
And several people do this in their personal life, rather than say, okay, it's another $180,000, no problem, I'll absorb it, I know how things go. If we dive into it and we say to our provider, are you simply telling me that if I want to continue to do business with you, you're raising my price a 7.5%? We look at all the benefits our teams or our employees are getting, and we want, we look what else in the market is there that's equal or better. We'll at least have done our diligence to know that this is the best we can do for what we have, rather than purely accept it.
So, if I may, we are part of a consortium, and when we met with the insurance provider, they did provide us, they provide pricing for additional plans, and that is part of what will be reviewed by the insurance committee. So, there are other options, indeed. It would be very difficult, I think, at this point to change providers that quickly. Whenever, if we were to leave the consortium and go out and maybe do an RFP with other healthcare providers, that's time-intensive. We can take a look at it, but also changing providers can be pretty tricky.
There's other couple of unique dynamics. Well, first of all, as a small business owner, 7% increase. I would love to have something that's small. In the private sector, it's anywhere from 10% to 25%. The other dynamic is the cost and the coverage for the individuals. My guess is we could probably get a lot less expensive programs, but one of the draws for District 38 is we have a relatively good insurance program that is very attractive to, I'm sure, many of our teachers.
Excuse me. We have one plan that is of no cost to employees, and the amount that the district pays for those individuals on that plan is a certain amount, and that is the amount that's given to any individual that signs up for healthcare. One of the things that I've noticed in looking at some of the plans, our deductibles are pretty low in comparison to other districts. So, one of the things I'll be asking the committee to look at are the different plans. And we have an advantage that we offer Kaiser and United, and not just one provider. So, that'll be something we look at.
And you raised a good point there, and that is, just as we're doing a comparison for compensation side of things with our neighboring school districts, I'm assuming we're doing something similar here, so that we're comparable on the cost side and the benefit side of these health plans, right? So, the compensation is a package of everything, and are we being, are we comparing everything?
Yes, we are. What's nice about the consortium is that because we are not a large employer, if there is a large claim, we're not impacted significantly by, as we would if we were self-insured. So, we are looking at different plans, and we'll narrow those down.
How many school, is it all school districts in this consortium?
School districts and government entities.
In what area? Is it a large area?
It's about, I don't recall how many in the state. It's about, I don't recall how many in the state, but there's approximately 40,000 individuals that are in CEBT.
Okay.
Or that are represented.
So it's a pretty large group.
It is, it is.
But it's made up of small entities?
Correct.
I might add too, that we do get every year the PAPASBO Group, which is the Pikes Peak Regional Association of School Business Officials. We do, they gather that data from our immediate districts in the area so that we can compare. It gets a little tricky because you're not always comparing apples to apples as far as what benefits are offered in other districts. But we at least do have access to that information.
Is there anything else you want to hone in on with that, Mr. Schwartz, or?
No, thank you.
Okay.
Questions?
Thank you.
Okay, I think we covered most of the items that I currently have on this list. But again, I welcome feedback input to these budget assumptions. If something important is missing, please let me know. The next few slides really are just showing that we are working hard to align the budget with the district's strategic plan. So really, the next few slides are just each priority and then potential financial expenditure items that might relate to those priorities.
Do you anticipate those being incremental to the budget, for example, as compared to this year or part and parcel of it?
Are you asking, do I anticipate increases, incremental increases to each of these types of lines?
Slides, for example, under budget parameters and aligning to the strategic plan, do you anticipate that as being burned into the budget as compared to this current school year? Or do you, do you foresee this as being somewhat or completely incremental?
I think a lot of the items are incremental in that they're already existing in the budget, but just things that we need to pay attention to and examine the costs behind to make sure that, for example, the programs that we are paying for, do we want to continue them, are they effective? And do that type of evaluation? Do you want to give an example?
I think the one that pops up for me at least under priority one is that long range plan for improving and or replacing. And I wouldn't just say aging facilities, but just our facilities and our operations, which I know Mr. Coulter is very eager to review what we have already and to conduct more of a needs analysis in some of these areas. I don't think we're going to be able to necessarily have a full blown, comprehensive, down to the level of detail of everything that we want to tackle as early as late spring. But I think that helps sets the stage for the fall and beyond type conversations. So I think it's hard to say right now exactly how to project that until we're looking at more actual needs, what we've addressed, what we need to address, and how all that situates both short term and long term. That's just one example. As another example, on the other end, maintaining class sizes, we are currently not making a recommendation to adjust the ratio of class sizes. That is already a function of our policy and our regulation. So that would be an example of maintaining what we have. But then based on enrollment projections, we are going to see some increases to FTE at a particular grade level or a site where we know that the enrollment that's coming in needs to be addressed within those parameters. So that's just an example of some of what that looks like in detail.
The JBC will have a vote on the budget in May, still?
Yes. That's what we're being told.
They do anticipate it coming in earlier than in the last two fiscal years, for sure. And so after the priority slides showing each of the priorities and how the budget strategy will align to the strategic plan, I just did a quick sort of projection for what our initial revenue forecast will look like. Couple of assumptions that went into that include, right now I used the, the number, which is based on the optimistic 50% buy down of the budget stabilization factor. We now know that's probably a high end estimate. And it may come down slightly from there. But currently, the February forecast was set at 9118 for our PPR. And then the enrollment is actually a low end forecast because I based it on March count here today. And we do, we are anticipating some higher numbers come enrollment for next school year. So Monument enrollments number 1151, of course, has to come out of our budget. And then we are anticipating a little bit extra funding for students on IEP. So this is just an initial projection of what we might expect for revenue for 22, 23 school year, taking into those, into account those considerations. And this is just general fund revenues, it does not include grants.
Any questions on the budget?
I have a statement.
Go ahead.
I know I'm going to sound like a broken record here because you hear it, we've heard it for the last four years. Personally, my number one priority is staff compensation getting us caught up. And I recognize, recognizing that there's only so much in the pie, we all understand that. And the work that's gone into looking at each of these priorities and what are some of the important parts of these priorities as we're looking at our budget. I appreciate that. And at the same time, I'm just going to take for an example, priority two, fund textbook adoption cycle. That's important. And it's not going to, I know it's not what it takes to get teachers raised, I get that. It's an example that I would place, if I were to rank, I would place teacher compensation and staff compensation, especially our student facing staff, as my number one priority. That's just me advocating.
And that is of course under priority three.
Thank you. So any other questions or comments on the budget presentation?
Yeah, I just want to make a suggestion for the future that the very last slide has the initial revenue forecast with the exclusion of grant funding, is that correct? So is there a way we could construct a matrix, for lack of a better term, that shows our current grants, what the funding is? Maybe, you know, well, we can talk about what columns to have in it offsite if you want. But just so that we as a board have a constant situational awareness of where we are with grant funding, what grants have come in and how long that grant funding will continue.
Yes, and we have been seeing an influx of grant monies, which is great. It's a lot to keep track of and each grant has its own requirements, et cetera. So yeah, I'd be happy to meet with you and figure out what kind of a presentation you'd like to see on that.
Sure, just an overview and then for my fellow board members, with the, the goal being that at any one time, we can have one grid in front of us that shows us our grant funding because we as a board, many of those grants will timeout in three or four years and then we need to be thinking about the sustainability of those funds. So it would help us in terms of our long-term planning and aligning with our strategic plan.
I think that's a good idea, along with where that grant money goes. Because it's obviously usually specified for specific allocated.
Sure. I'll work with you on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kitty.
Any other comments or questions on this budget?
Thank you, just a point of confusion, it may be just me, by the way. As we look at the general fund revenue assumptions page and we try to take a swing at the estimated enrollment for next year. If I look at, what I'm doing is I'm comparing the enrollment data on your previous chart. And I noticed as a district, which of course includes Monument Academy, we're up 147, which is about 2 and 1/4%, which is about a million dollars. Is that?
The numbers on the district enrollment, you're talking about this chart right here.
Yeah, the 147.
So that, remember that it does include Monument Academy.
Yeah, I just noted that, yes. But, but, but they're part of our district and they're part of our team as well. And my question is, it's about a million dollars. It's about 2% of 50 million, it's about a million dollars. Is this an anomaly? Or is this something that we should consider burning into our plan? And maybe you already did, I just wasn't clear on it.
I think what we're seeing is a restoration of enrollment growth, particularly within the course of a school year that we were typically used to seeing pre-COVID. I think our projection and specific to that 6695 number that you see in those assumptions, that is confirmed enrollment that we have been tracking. We know these are kids that will be in our seats as of August. There is always some fluctuation that occurs as we progress March through October. Our typical trend that we see is about 100 to 150 more students from March to October. So when we talk about that being a low end projection, that in addition to all the other information, we spent some time looking at demographic study and other factors that are influencing enrollment, would suggest that we will get back to seeing some moderate to potentially some high growth, particularly as we're looking at specific schools that are absorbing many of those kids. We talked about Bear Creek just a moment ago. So I think the overarching answer is yes. And that's extremely important for us to be planning for, both with the growth factor in mind, as well as the overall budgetary impact and implications as a result.
May I attempt to summarize?
Sure.
So at the end of the day, if we look at this 147, we'll have revenue for them going forward, with the exception of those that are seniors in high school, because the likelihood of them continuing in the district is extremely high.
Well done, yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, anything else on this preliminary budget look? I had a question on your file, general fund budget actual.
Okay.
So generally, this is just, we're 8/12 through your budget, right? So when we're comparing here and I see 65.99, that would be compared to 66.66, which is 8/12, right? And as I go down through these various areas, I'm over and certain areas under. Overall, I'm at 66.23, so we're pretty much on plan, correct?
That is correct, yes.
Does this include the salary adjustments?
Yes.
That we're retroactive?
Yes, because February was the first month that we, we retroactively paid.
That's just what I wanted to be clear about. This is a retroactive adjustment, so there's no more, I mean, there is the increase, it just goes on. But there's no lump sum anymore that's going to be hitting us. And it's already factored into these numbers.
That is correct, yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much.
Thanks Kitty.
Our next agenda item is policy update, first reading of revisions to policies.
So we're going to have both Rick and Kristen tag team this update for you with some additional detail. So I think there should be a slide already queued up there, Rick.
And just to be clear, we reviewed most of this in the work session, correct?
Correct.
That is correct.
Is there anything uniquely new from the work session?
No, we heard a few questions that you asked during the work session that we're prepared to answer this evening. But from the documents that you have in front of you, there are no changes from what you saw a couple of weeks ago.
Thank you very much.
Yep. One of the questions I heard was, was why? Why were we asking? And by the way, the reason the two of us are up here is I'm the Title IX compliance officer, which is directly impacted by any complaint that would occur with non-discrimination, equal opportunity. I've been working very closely with Kristen because if it's a complaint with personnel, she'd be directly involved with GBAA. And if it were a student specific complaint, I would be involved with JBB. The primary reason we're making this change is Title IX was changed and adapted last summer. And we are trying to catch up to those changes in our policy. And that's the purpose for this. One thing that we've done is we've, we've aligned AC, GBAA and JBB, so they're all consistent with each other and there's no discrepancies in our practices. If there were ever to be a complaint in any one of those areas, we would be able to align all of those. The reason we're making a revision to the regulations to AC and all the exhibits to AC is that then we'll specifically spell out our response to any potential complaint that comes in. Another question that we heard in the work session was, why are we utilizing Kaplan and Ernst, our, our attorneys in this process versus a typical CASB recommendation? And the answer to that is if we were ever to go into a complaint that needed to be defended, they would be our legal counsel that would do so. And we wanted to align with them proactively in, in the case of any complaint and be in a complete alignment with any defense that we would need to incur or any counsel that we need to incur in a complaint. So that's why it's a little bit different from other policy revisions that we've put in front of you. I can go through the remainder of these slides, but they're pretty much the same thing you've already seen. So I'm open for any questions, I know Kristen is as well.
So I, I promise, I didn't know you were responsible for Title IX. And I, when I made the comment in my board member comments, I didn't know that either, by the way. Did I, was I out of, out of line when I was making those comments? From your perspective?
Well, from my perspective, if, as a Title IX compliance officer, we have some very specific guidelines that we would need to follow if anybody were ever to feel like we were out of line at any place. So the purpose of these policies and revisions is to, to follow those procedures very clearly and really, at the end of the day, protect all of our students.
I would just add one more thing, which is in hearing from other districts who are also responsible for ensuring compliance with Title IX regulations, including, including a very detailed process for investigation and resolution of any complaint. If we were not following these rules, the district would be liable and it could be a significant financial burden that we would have to be responsible for, not to mention not affording individuals protections that are also afforded by law. So this is one of those buckets where the law is very clear. And as much as I appreciate there may be personal interpretation of it one way or another, we don't have the luxury in our positions to, specifically those that are investigating and working toward complaint resolution to ad lib or do anything outside of that legal arena. So that's just something I would offer up.
And that's another reason that we chose the district's council, I'm assuming?
Absolutely. Yes, and I think Kaplan and Ernst is one of those firms which multiple and several districts across the state are utilizing. And just from my own personal experience in the past three years here, as well as preceding my time here in Lewis Palmer, they're as good as it gets.
I would concur with that assessment.
Any other comments or questions on this first reading? So we'll see this again next month for our second reading.
Yep, so if you have any questions or if anything comes up, don't hesitate to contact either Kristen or I. Kristen will field the personnel questions and I'll field the student specific questions.
Excellent, thank you very much.
I actually do have a question, sorry.
Sorry, I just was, so when I look at a lot of this, it seems like most of this is procedural.
Very much so, if you look at AC, it has removed harassment from that policy. And then you see it in GBAA and JBB. So that's one, one change. But it definitely, it provides definitions, a timeline, very specific in, in what steps need to be followed so that there would be consistency given any kind of complaint.
So just, just in closing, this is a lot of arduous, tedious work. But to take all of our policies and get them up to date into the 21st century, into the 2020s, is going to save us tremendous amounts of time and money in the future. going to save us tremendous amounts of time and money in the future. So kudos to all you folks doing the heavy lifting to provide us with this insurance policy.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Our, our next agenda item is CE3, the one I'm most excited to hear about tonight. So this is our Board Vice President, Teresa Phillips, and Dr. Summers, and...
I might ask Ms. Wetstein to also join us, because I think she may be able to give us a nice summary of what we're doing or trying to do. And then we can sort of bridge it there.
I'm glad to give a general orientation, if you'd like.
Yeah, Teresa, if you would.
Sure.
Would you describe, if you would, the, the letter of support?
Sure.
That you're suggesting?
And before I do that, let me just take a more, a little step back, just to orient the board members. So Ms. McAllister is in the process of working up and writing a grant for funds that would come from CDE if it were granted. And it is to support three additional counselors, one at each of our secondary schools, including the middle school. And in writing up the grant, one of the unique things about this grant is it allows five letters of support to be submitted along with the application. And those letters of support are not limited to any one entity. So she has one or two letters of support from students. And she also has letters of support from the principals, I believe, as a combined letter now. And in visiting with her about this on Friday, we did a little brainstorming. And, and I learned more myself, as I dug in, that we could submit a letter as an entire board in support of this application. So that is what I am proposing, given that short timeline, that everything is due, I think, on Friday, although we're trying to compile it by tomorrow at 3:00. So given that, I took a stab at it and drafted a draft, which is certainly open to suggestion and edit, and that is what you have in front of you. We are trying to advocate for a counseling position that would hopefully allow a counselor at each site to oversee more comprehensively the ICAP program. And you'll see, I think I have a paragraph in there that refers to the career, supporting the CTE and career in college readiness programs, such that our other counselors can do more of the lifting for the mental health component. So Amber, go ahead and add to that whatever you'd like.
Well said. We are in the process of editing down a very lengthy narrative that we need to reduce about in half by the time we submit. And we're happy, I'm not sure if that was included in board docs.
I don't think it was.
We're happy to share that draft with you, if you would like. But Ms. Phillips gave an excellent summary of the intent of the grant.
We didn't share the draft yet of the, it is quite lengthy, and it takes...
I think Vicki's going to attach it, just for good measure, just as a reminder, that is still very much in draft form. So that's just where we're at today.
I have a question. If we were to get awarded this grant, would that free up any monies out of the general fund that we may be using for these programs right now?
No.
Okay.
It would provide additional staffing support for students. So it would free up, essentially, current counselors' workloads to focus more so, as Ms. Phillips stated, on some of their, their social, emotional, and mental health supports to students, as well as their other counselor duties. And these new positions would specifically focus on advising to help students explore their interests as they're choosing their careers and their colleges.
And two more, just slightly compelling points. The grant is a four-year grant, and the first year is actually a partial FTE, if I understand correctly, that because that first year, there would need to be some assessment as to how best to apply the, what, what those employees would be doing. And then in years two, three, and four, then we would be allowed the full three FTE allotment. Also, I just wanted to, just as a means of data that I decided not to put in the letter, the American School Counseling Association recommends a ratio of 250 students to one counselor. In the state of Colorado, the average is 278 students per one counselor. And in Lewis Palmer School District, we are currently at 327 students per one counselor.
What would we be with this grant?
Closer to 250. Once fully online, it would be five counselors at each high school, and a third counselor in the middle.
And who, where's the money come from?
CDE.
This is a Colorado State-funded grant.
And it's four years. Is it scale up into year two, three, or is it?
Yeah. It does, it scales up in year two, and it stays at that level from years two, three, and four. And I'm looking through here. I need to, sometimes these grants, this would be considered year one, and...
This coming year would be year one, if I understand.
Okay. I'm looking back through the dates on the timeline here and wanting to verify that. But in the year, the first year of funding, we would call that a planning year. And as Ms. Phillips explained, we would assess how best to develop our implementation plan.
Comments, questions?
Are there strings attached, like mandatory reporting, or?
We always have to report with grants. We have to track our progress. We have to report to CDE on if we've done what we said we were going to do with the funds, submit budget revisions, all of those kinds of things. I would say there are not additional strings beyond that, other than we will want to make sure to consider how we'll sustain our efforts once the grant is concluded.
And the application is due when?
Friday.
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 Or tomorrow at 3:00, depending on how you think about it.
So I think as far as the letter goes, the idea is, is just as a board, by consensus, right? We, we're just going to support Teresa submitting the letter on behalf of the board as the, is that what we're agreeing to?
What I don't know is actually how to actually sign it.
So a couple of options there. We could have one signature representing the entire board. That could certainly be any of you, maybe most traditionally would be the president. So I think we just wanted to make sure, number one, that, that the board is in support of said letter, so that it effectively echoes the full support of our file. I don't know that we're going to track down all your signatures, although Vicki's pretty good at trying to keep up with you. So...
I have to sign an assurances form anyway.
That too. Yes. That would, this would be separate from that, but in addition, yeah.
Understood. So I'm okay with having Teresa sign that, if you all are. I, I think it's a good idea.
Whatever, whatever works best is fine, totally fine with me. I don't need, I appreciate the gesture, but I don't need my name attached if it, the easiest thing is to have the board president sign. And that is, one of the templates I saw was one signed by a board president. So that's all I've seen as well. But however it works...
That would be my suggestion, Mr. Taylor, just for consistency's sake, since your name will appear on the program assurances. And then you do represent the board as a spokesperson in communication such as this.
Happy to do it, but also willing to share. But I'm good either way. So we're good. I'll sign it.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions, anyone, on this matter? What's our probability?
Well, I'll, I'll just say this, that I did not, I was not very optimistic about the literacy grant, which was for a similar amount of money. And so I'm changing my outlook moving forward.
So one of the criteria that is very much in our favor is that we have never been awarded this grant. And it's listed as one of the five aspects that they will look at. So as soon as we are in the bucket of no, we have never received this, I think our chances go up.
Cool. Well, thank you for the extra effort, Teresa, in helping push this forward. And be sure to pass on our gratitude to Jessica and...
I will. I will do that. Thank you. Another question?
I can ask offline. I just had a question, and you said in the application, we have to share how it's going to be sustainable. So I was just curious to see what that ends up looking like.
So that's always a question in every grant that we would write and submit. And so we are in the narrative explaining that we will plan for that. And that could potentially mean that we decide to staff for those positions moving forward in some way. Or we could build capacity of our current counseling staff through training and using these additional staff members to kind of mentor and support these efforts once the grant funds end.
But I do understand from Ms. Wilcox as well, that the, it, it does communicate to those reviewing the grant applications, if there is a board letter of support, that the board is behind, and has, has something to do with the sustainability of these positions.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amber.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that motion.
Comments, questions? Hearing none. Ms. Wood?
Mr. Clausen?
Aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Ms. Upchurch?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to meet in executive session to discuss a personnel matter, the superintendent's evaluation, in accordance with Colorado Revised Statute 24-6-402, Subpart 4, Subpart F, Subpart I. And we'd like Dr. Summers to join us in the strong conference room. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Ms. Wood?
Mr. Clausen?
Aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Ms. Upchurch?
Aye.
And so we will adjourn, once the executive session is done, this board meeting. Thank you.